I'll now call the meeting to order, Dunsborough City Council on April fifteenth, two thousand and twenty at six oh four P M. We could. Dave, would you like to lead us in your moment of silence and then the flag salute?
Yes. Before we get the meeting started, it's with grave sadness and a deep, deepened heart that I would like to announce the passing of our friend Ann Powers. She was a pillar of this community. Her and her husband Bob were my friends. They believed in my soapboxes. They believed in a lot of things and they supported me. They supported a lot of things, the library and, and Resource Center. They've done a lot. So I'm asking everybody to give us the next thirty seconds, a moment of silence. This is for you, Ann. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Would you like to lead the flag salute?
Kind of got a lump in my throat. You need to pick somebody else.
All right, Councilman Dutch.
I got it. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States.
The United States of America.
And to the Republic.
Republic.
Which stands.
Which stands.
One nation.
One nation.
Under God.
Under God.
Indivisible.
Indivisible.
With liberty.
With liberty.
And justice for all.
For all.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, everyone. Wendy, can we move into roll call?
Councilmember Art.
Here.
Councilmember Doish.
Here.
Councilmember Kaisler.
Here.
Mayor Brian.
Here.
And Councilwoman Lukeyzi has absent. Thank you.
Thank you. Item three is special presentations and announcements. We do not have any scheduled for this evening's agenda. Move on to item four, public comment. This is a general reg, general public comment. It's time for any members of the public to comment. You can have up to three minutes. Please state your name and address prior to that so we can get you in the minutes. And it's time to comment on anything that is not specifically on this agenda. So anything generally relating to the city or anything that is on the consent agenda, which today is just the check registry for the last two weeks or so. So if you wish to participate in public comment on Zoom, go to the participants tab. And at the bottom right hand, there's a raise hand button. If you hit that, it'll raise your hand and let us know you want to comment. If you're calling in from the phone, hit star nine and it'll achieve the same, same effect. All right, I'm not seeing anyone now, but in case anyone is away, we're doing general public comment at this time. Go to the participants tab and hit the raise your hand function. All right, I still seen none. I will now close the general public comment. We'll move on to council and staff comments. City manager, would you like to begin?
I'm returning after a week and a half off and I guess I don't have anything new to report. I can just give you a list of things to catch up on and that is looking at where we are in terms of drawings for the Mossbury Falls. An update on the Butterfly Bridge and where we are in terms of coronavirus one funds and and we're exactly where we are in terms of getting stimulus dollars into the city. I know there is a a form, it's certainly an application. It's something that says that we're interested in receiving the money. I don't know why anybody would not be, but we haven't gotten any information to this point. So I need to reach out to the feds and figure out where that is. That's it.
Thank you so much, City Manager. I'm glad you finally got more than a couple of days in a row off. I hope it was regenerating.
Very much so.
All right, I see that Sergeant Kubowitz is on the line. If you'd like to unmute him or unmute yourself. Sergeant Kubowitz.
Can you guys hear me?
Yeah.
Yes, thank you.
Perfect. Thank you, Ms. Mayor. I got the stats for the month of March. We had five hundred and two hours patrol time, two hundred and two total calls for service. We took twenty-two cases for the month. Conducted twenty-five traffic stops. We wrote six citations. We made six arrests, three which were felony arrests, three which were misdemeanors. One of the felony arrests was a guy during a traffic stop threw a gun on me. Another guy was part of a standoff that we had at Cave Springs. The other misdemeanor arrests were warrants and some public intoxications for the month. We only had two burglaries. One was unfounded. The other one was just an attempt. We had six thefts, which were petty thefts, which means a value of nine hundred and fifty dollars or less. We had one auto theft. One assault and batteries. No domestic disturbances, three vandalisms, sixteen school checks and kind of an overall disturbing in the peace calls. We had sixteen. No specific spots, just all over town.
Question?
Yeah, go ahead, sir.
Sam, when you say school check, could you clarify just what that means?
That's where the deputies or myself, we drive through the school on either day shift or night shift, just make sure everything is going good. With COVID, but I'm not seeing like day shifts when I'm doing driving through schools. I'm not seeing the teachers out and about or the schools because of, you know, everybody's locked down in the classrooms. There's not too much outside, but we just want to make sure when we're driving through the schools that, you know, we're not seeing anything that's abnormal, you know, vehicles that probably shouldn't be there. We're not getting waved down by teachers or staff saying, hey, we got a problem. So just checking them out and making sure everything's safe.
All right, thank you. We really appreciate that effort.
We really do.
And then since, since I, I do have a little bit of time. I know, I know there's going to be a lot of questions or coming up soon. We've been having, obviously, these are last month's stats, but this month we've been having a little bit more burglaries and we just need to remind everybody in the city and even in the county that, you know, with warmer weather, people are going to be out and about more often. People and residents need to make sure their houses back of the properties and stuff that are lit up. People that like to steal don't like to be under the light. Cameras, cameras help surveillance cameras, trail cameras help us out, identify us. I love, I love the Dunsborough Neighborhood Watch Facebook. The other one that does the Siskiyou.
Shot on camera.
The camera guy? Yeah.
Yeah.
I love, I love when, don't take us to heart, but I love when victims post those photos or videos. And then everybody from Facebook helps us identify the people that are stealing. So everybody just needs to be cautious, not leaving stuff outside. It's getting warmer. People are out and about more often and we're trying to do our best. We're trying to talk to everybody we can at nighttime and walking around and you know, if anybody wants to come talk and has information regarding some stuff, they could, there is some, there is a way to be anonymous. They will come talk to me personally and, you know, I can keep their name confidential and we can go from there. Thank you, Sam.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I, this is Councilmember Peter Art that I'm looking at a blue screen because my computer has taken over and I'm at twenty-two percent for uploading whatever new fangled things are going into my computer. But I'm on the phone and I want to compliment the sheriff's office for their responsiveness on what Sam just talked about. About eleven o'clock last night, my new tenant in the Dough Hook Bakery building called and said, based on the cameras and what I'm seeing on my phone, there's somebody inside the building. I said, go ahead and call the sheriff's office. And the sheriff's office rolled two units. I went out in my socks with my flashlight to try to find the bad guys. But the sheriff's office was there with two units in five minutes. And so you all know, the Dough Hook has been hit twice from the rear of the building. Pops was hit hard. They busted through. The property next to Pops came into the rear and Victor Martin lost microphones, amps, speakers.
God.
And so it's exactly as described, it's opportunistic for people looking in the dark at night to break into buildings and take stuff. But I think going forward, I hope the merchants on Dunsborough Avenue and eventually Sacramento Avenue get together with cameras and eyes open and there's no room for people like this. So thank you very much to the sheriff's office.
Here, here. Thank you, Councilman Art. All right, if there's no further questions, thank you so much.
Todd, are you going to be in tomorrow or Monday or Tuesday of next week?
Sam, look, let's shoot for Monday or Tuesday next week. Give me a time and I'll be there.
Perfect. I might actually, I just thought about this because I was talking to Mark. I just wanted to give you a call maybe tomorrow in the morning, early, like before eight thirty. I got a question for you.
Okay.
Thanks, sir. I saw, I just, I just saw your name, your name popped up in my head, so.
Okay, that's good.
Big Todd.
Thank you. Finance Director Michelson.
Yeah, nothing to report. Thanks all.
Thank you. All right. We're moving through the staff reports. Would you like to begin, Councilman Dutch?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to point out a couple of things. First of all, I was, as a commissioner at the local transportation commission, we got word that the infrastructure money that's going to be flowing is going to be able to fund some projects that are new and exciting. They're kind of saying that they're going to have money to fix roads and that, but they're also looking for projects in and around the county that might be ready to go and, and something that could enhance business and economic development. And so one of the things I thought of there is the airport and the acreage back east of there. That might be something where we, if we were able to get some planning money, we could set it up so that we have some shovel ready plan to put in roads up there for the industrial park. So I just wanted to throw that out of the ether so that people are aware of that. The other thing is, is that I want to point out if you haven't heard, but on April twenty-sixth, so not next Monday, but the Monday after that, the airport will be shut down for two months and they'll be putting in an entirely new runway. And that's all going to be paid for by the FAA, not anything out of our pocket. It's three million dollars coming to put in a new runway. And the idea was it'll be open, I believe, July second, which puts the airport back in operation before the main part of the fire season, which was the main goal there. So that's what's taking place with that. And also we'll be having a airport committee meeting on the twenty-first. So we'll be able to share that information with the pilots and everybody else involved. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Dutch. Councilman Art.
I simply want to associate myself with the comments of Councilmember Kaisler regarding Ann Powers. She was a personal friend of mine. I sort of gave my comments last night at the planning commission, which now has a vacancy due or passage on Easter Sunday. But I think Ann and Bob were the essence of what it means to be an involved member of the Dunsborough community. She was a fierce advocate of the library. I can tell you, there would not be a Dunsborough Community Garden without Ann Powers. And for those that want to honor her memory, we are working with Steve Bryan to move all of the composting away from the waterfall, the Ross Taylor Waterfall. And that will be a children's area. There will be children's beds. There will be small tables, picnic tables for the kids. And if you read the paper yesterday, you'd see about the children's programs through the Resource Center and the Community Garden. Ann was a teacher for at least part of her career. And we hope to honor her forever. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Art. Councilman Kaiser.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Peter. And just so you know that there's a few of us who are working on a bench so that we could have like an Ann Powers bench to sit down in the garden with your permission.
Please.
We would like to have, there's going to be a day when everybody can come out. We're still putting it together, but everybody's going to bring a flower and plant the flower in behalf of Ann. And we'll have like a celebration of life day and we'll let everybody know when that's going to happen. It, this sucks, but I look forward to that day to honor this lady.
Good man.
Hey, got to take a breath. Ah, here we go. Tomorrow night, I've managed to put a meeting together at six o'clock at the community building. I got a feller named Jim. He's going to be coming talking to us about the clear cut going on. Just so you know that this clear cut proposal is already started. And it goes from Sims to my backyard here at the eight hundred foot bridge. They're talking about some kind of checkerboard thing for, because of the owls. Doesn't matter. There's a lot of concern about erosion and flooding and just all in all concern. So I encourage people, especially if you own a home or property along this hill, to come to the community building tomorrow night at six o'clock. And I'm going to remind everybody that it is still, because it's a community building, this chairs are six feet apart and everybody's asked to wear a mask. That's from Mike Rodriguez. He runs the building. These are his rules. We have to comply. The other thing is there's been a project going on at Dunsborough Elementary School. And I would like to coordinate a day, maybe like a Saturday afternoon. When the council can get together, maybe one at a time, like one at one o'clock, one at two o'clock or two, one o'clock, two at two o'clock. And everybody, let's take a field trip and let's see what Kathleen Shirley has done with the help of numerous volunteers. And they managed to build an outdoor classroom at the school. I've personally worked on it and I got to tell you, it's pretty awesome. And I would love for the council to see it firsthand. And then maybe we could work on some kind of recognition for Kathleen Shirley, because I'm going to tell you, she put our elementary school on the map using rotary ideas and she made, she made us Rotarians proud. So I'm hoping that we can coordinate a day to look at that and make this all come to fruition, to honor a lady who did a great job for our kids. And the last thing I want to say as far as comments before we get into committee reports. Kubowitz mentioned locking up your doors. We all know what happens here in summertime. I've had my car stolen. I've had my car broke into. They dare not come in my house yet, but. So lock up your doors. If you've got hedges that are trimmed, growed up above the windows, maybe cut them down. If you're going somewhere, let your neighbors know so that they could call and report suspicious activities. You know, it's on us to look out for each other and I encourage us to do that. Summertime, bring some strange people to town, so it's on us to keep them in check. All right, thank you.
All right, thank you, Councilman Kaiser. I'd just like to to, I'm very sorry for the loss of Ann Powers. Thank you guys so much for describing her involvement in the community. I wish I got to know her better, but that should be missed. And to echo Sergeant Kubowitz and Big Dave's recommendation that everyone watch out, but I would say, you know, in addition to letting everyone know, report suspicious behavior. The sheriffs can't do their job effectively if they don't know there's a problem in real time. So let's do our best. If we think something's, you know, of concern, all the sheriffs, it doesn't hurt. It doesn't have to be one hundred percent sure. But if you think there might be something going on, don't hesitate to reach out. Let's move on to committee reports.
Mr. Mayor, could I ask a question of Big Dave?
Certainly.
I, I did not have the opportunity to attend the meeting of the Dunsborough Parks and Recreation District. But I read in the paper yesterday that the district has said, if we can get the lifeguards, we will have a community pool swimming season. And so my question to Big Dave is, is there anything the city can do or needs to do to facilitate having a swimming season this summer for the community?
Peter, I appreciate that. I'm going to consider you one of my friends of the library. Going to be holding, going to be holding a, like we did last year, I'm going to be a whole, or the year before, I'll be holding a yard sale for Saturday and Sunday at, in front of the Park and Recreations Building. And if anybody wants to bring things down, don't bring me no junk, but bring things down that we could sell. And all the money goes to Mike Rodriguez for the pool, for the lifeguards, for equipment and for, and hopefully for any maintenance that we need to do. The pool is going to open in July and we do have some lifeguards. We're working on getting some more. And, you know, hopefully I'll be the first person to jump in that pool again. And that water's cold, people. But, but, yeah, it's going to happen. We're working on it. We're recruiting more lifeguards. And like I say, we're going to be doing a fundraiser for the pool, but I'll let everybody know here in the next, at the next meeting. Thank you, Peter.
Well, I think keeping faith with our community and does the city of Dunsborough care. This is a visible demonstration that we do and I got some quality stuff to sell, my friend.
I bet you do, sir. Thank you, Peter. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Were there any committees that met in the last two weeks?
Yes. The, the finance committee met the other day, but we postponed till Monday because there were a few people that needed to be there that couldn't be there. And there were questions that were asked and the person that asked them that had the answers wasn't there. She's also not here tonight. She is very well missed. So we will see what happens next Monday. And the other committee, this is kind of good news. The short term rental committee, we met for the last time. And we now have these agreed that it's, that it's time to disband this committee. We no longer need to meet. All of our thoughts. I was going to say all of our thoughts and prayers. I guess that's a good way to put it. All of our thoughts and prayers have been put into a package that will be presented to the planning commission. Once, once approved, it will be brought to us, the council, which being part of this committee, I, I'm, I'm in favor of this package a hundred percent. It's perfect. And just to give everybody a heads up, it's got a no charcoal thing in there. Because charcoal's been our worst enemy. Can't contain it, can't control, can't put it out right, opposed to propane barbecues. So that's a big thing. That's what's being brought to the planning commission. There's a lot of other stipulations like foliage and clearances away from buildings and stuff. And I want to commend Rico Tinsman and the rest of the people on this committee that have worked with it so diligently. Rico put hours, time, he did his work. And I got to tell you, I feel fortunate to have him doing this for us. It's, it's a perfect package for us. I'm confident. And so we'll see what, after planning commission gets done with it and kicks it back to us, we'll see what it has. But those are the two committees that, that I'm on, that we met and I don't know if there's any other, those, that's my report.
Thank you, Councilman Kaiser. Were there any other committees that met? All right, seeing none. Let's move forward to the approval of the minutes for the April first meeting, April first, two thousand and twenty-one.
I'll go ahead and make your motion to approve the minutes.
I'll second.
All right, there's a motion and a second. Any discussion at the motion and time?
Well, I have to thank the official recorder of our meetings for making a notation that I'm in love with Councilmember Lukeyzi's brain. I hope that stays in the annals of Dunsborough City history forever.
Forever.
Good job, Wendy.
All right. So there's a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Against? All right, motion carries for one absent. All right, let's move forward into the consent agenda. For the consent agenda today, we only have the check register from March twenty-seventh through April ninth. Are there any questions concerning the check register or the consent agenda?
Okay, I'll make a motion to adopt the consent agenda.
I'll second it.
All right, motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
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 All right, motion against? Motion carries for with one absent. We have this evening, no public hearing and no old business. So move us into item eleven, new business. And I would just say, before we begin the items of new business, we have wastewater rate, sorry, water rate study committee appointments. It's water and sewer rate study. Reopening for city events, return to in-person meetings. And then item D, economic development discussion. I would ask that we table this until Councilwoman Lukeyzi can be present because she's the main person preparing that, that.
Are we talking about item D?
Item D, yes.
Well, then table.
I'll second that.
All right. There's a motion and a second. Are there any questions? I guess I'd just like to say, I'm all in favor of continuing this discussion at any point in time. But I do think that Councilwoman Lukeyzi had specific things based on our prior conversations that she wanted to move forward with. So I think it's good to table it. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Against? Motion carries unanimously. All right, let us begin. Item A, water, what's it, it always says water rate study committee appointments, but I believe the What's it always says Water Rate Study Committee Appointments, but I believe it's just Rate Study for the Water and Sewer Rate Study. One's an update, one's a full study. Yes?
Yeah, as the chair, can I go ahead and brief this?
Yes, definitely.
Thank you, sir. So we had a brief meeting about a month or two ago, and we basically kind of set out the idea. That what we're going to be doing is merging the Water Rate Study and the Sewer Rate Study into. A synchronous process so that, since we have to renew these every five years, the idea would be that every five years now we'll both do these in tandem. So we're starting off that now, and with that in mind, we're, we've asked Pace Engineering. To come and bring together the data that we need to start the process. What we've been waiting on to have that meeting, which we're scheduled for to have tomorrow. Is the appointment of the two members that we're looking for. We are looking for two members. And we have two members who have, two citizens who have applied for the task force, Louis Dewey and Catherine Wallace. And I've, I know that Wendy has made sure they're here today, and so I'd like to take it from there.
There were actually three. There was a third one emailed out.
There's not. She applied for Planning Commission. It is not for this.
I'd like to correct you guys that there's actually an application from Ms. Baker for both the Planning Commission and the Rate Study. And so she is here with us tonight to the the Rate Study.
Okay.
I think I, I believe I included the wrong application though in your agenda packet.
Now. Planning Commission.
Yeah, so anyway, Mr. Mayor, that's kind of the situation right now, so we're getting ready to meet. We have the kind of the process set in place. And we're looking for is approval of two members.
Okay, all right, thank you so much. I believe we do have the three applicants here tonight. So if we could. First have. The applicant Catherine Wallace, if you're here, if you want to say a few words, introduce yourself.
I'm Catherine Wallace. I live over on Wood Street. I've lived in Dunsmere now for 11 years. Absolutely love it. I. Really have appreciated the honor and the comments on End Powers. And. I know that all of us feel. A great loss. That can't be filled again. As far as the Water Committee or the Sewer Rates, I I'm just. Totally willing to join and and. Do whatever needs to be done. I I. I don't have a background in any of that, but I think from talking just briefly with. Councilmember Bruce that. We will just take all of the information and and sort it through and and come up with. Hopefully a very good plan. I I do a lot of volunteer work in in Dunsmere. I I am committed to that type of. Community involvement. And I think that's about it. The one other thing I will say, Big Dave, I really would like to go see that outdoor classroom. Whenever you get that together. And also Kathleen's husband, Brian, has just completed what they call a sound immersion at Mercy Hospital. And I saw a video of it, and it's incredible for kids.
Right on.
Yeah, it's bamboo pipes and and makes music as you want, you know, they're swinging in the breeze and and makes.
We have that up here.
Oh, did he do that up here?
Yeah. Where do you see it?
Yeah, it's incredible. Those two people are just creative beyond all dreams, so. I'm glad to be here tonight and thank you for your time.
All right, thank you. All right, if Louis Dewey is on the line, you could say a few words, introduce yourself.
I don't think Louis is around.
He was on, he was on.
He was?
He is on, he is on. He can't unmute himself right now, it looks like.
They're gonna put a thing in there, unmute me.
There you are.
Okay. No, I did, I just, I think it's a shame the city just had to back down. They had a really great idea. I don't, I'm sure all of you know this by now, but you know, they. They sent out random. Water bills on the 1st of April. I mean, April 1st is not a really good day to send out these kind of water bills, but they were for around 10,000. Or more dollars apiece, and you know, they they backed out of those, so we have to have something else, obviously. Is anybody aware of that? I mean, that is. Pretty much a joke, guys. That's tongue in cheek, right? Anybody know what happened? Well, there were numbers of us that got huge, huge bills and and that's just one of those glitches of having new water meters. So the reality is, if I am, I am forced to be serious, I I would like to continue the work that we did before. And use the appropriate data that we didn't have before. And I I think we can come out with something that will work for the city. And and actually establish. Establish a pattern so that we can do it every five years and not be behind the eight ball.
Thank you, Louis. Are there any questions for Louis? And then our third candidate, Reverend Jeannie Baker, I believe she is also on the phone. Yes, you can make sure she can unmute herself.
Yes, I believe I'm unmuted.
Yes, you are. Thank you.
Yeah, so I do Zoom meetings every day. Good evening, everyone. This is Jeannie Baker, and I just want some clarification from Wendy before we start. Wendy, is it, not only did they lose my first application for the ratepayers, but now did I hear you say that? They did, the city council did not receive my application today either on the second one that you asked me to put in, is that correct?
I can fill that in. It was the, the, the application we saw on Monday. And when it first came out was the Planning Commission application. We did receive the correct one either today or yesterday, because I looked at it.
Okay, so you do indeed have the one for the rate committee, correct?
We do indeed, yes, thank you.
Okay, thank you so much. All right, so basically, you know, I've been a resident of Dunsmere for 20 years, so. I do, I am a ratepayer. I was told that the ratepayer committee. Application deadline was extended because nobody stepped up. So I thought, well, okay, I'll step up and help out and serve my community. I care deeply about my community. I am a Ford Foundation Leadership Program graduate. We managed to complete our program and a local community project within a timely manner. As many of you know, I am a world traveler. I've been a world traveler for over 40 years, which has given me. A wide experience and understanding different people's viewpoints. And I feel that I can help us reach an outcome that will be beneficial for most people. And I'm very happy that the smart meters are coming in to our city for our water meters. Thank you, everyone.
All right, thank you. All right, why don't I open up this topic for public comment? If anyone would like to make any public comment on the appointment to the Rate Study Committee. I'll open public comment right now. You can go to the Participants tab and. Click the Raise Your Hand button if you wish to make a public comment. See, now I'll close public comment. All right, let's move it forward into discussion. Councilman Deutsch, being the chair, would you like to begin?
Yes, sir. I think all, all of the members, all the people who have volunteered, I appreciate their volunteering, and. I'm looking forward to getting the inputs of the other members. So Dave, what do you think?
Well. I appreciate everybody's putting their, their hat in the, in a ring. But I see that Jeannie Baker's got her eye on the Planning Commission. And I honestly feel that Catherine Wallace and Louis Dewey are like the perfect for this one. So I would like to make a motion that Louis Dewey, that we accept the applications of Louis Dewey and Catherine Wallace. For the rate study. And I encourage Jeannie Baker to keep her application there for the Planning Commission.
All right. Thank you. There's a motion. Is there a second?
Yes.
All right, seeing as a motion is a second, any discussion on the motion at hand?
Having made the second, Councilmember Arth here. I think Louis. Candidly revealed. The gap between the city of Dunsmere and the businesses and citizens that we try to serve. As their representatives. So the April 1st thing, it was clubzy. And. I listened to. Chairman Deutsch. But it's my perspective that we have a short-term crisis. With the sewer fund. The 200 phantom accounts. The threat to our debt coverage, the need to get the rates and revenues right. That is something that is a high priority, and the citizens do not want any surprises. With the water plan, it is on a five-year cycle. We made a tremendous amount of progress. But the more we can reliably inform the citizens. That the city is trying to be prudent in getting grants and low-cost loans to improve our infrastructure. The credibility that any of the three candidates could bring can only be helpful, so I happily second. The nomination of Citizen Wallace and Citizen Dewey. Thank you.
And Mr. Mayor, I'd like to compliment Mr. Arth for his insight there on the challenges ahead, and we're going to definitely try and meet those challenges.
Thank you, absolutely.
Yeah, and I'd just like to thank everyone who is interested in serving with public outreach. You know, if you're not on this committee, definitely continue to apply. And just attend meetings and make public comments. You can really be profoundly influential through that avenue as well. All right. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. Against? A motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
That's a nice job, Louis.
So we're moving forward into item B. Reopening for city events. I think this came up just because, you know, in all fairness, we were asked by several different citizen groups.
Actually, I I brought this to the table, Mr. Mayor. I was asked by the people of the Railroad Days Committee.
Well, in addition to that, Big Dave. Over a month ago, we promised that we would revisit this in a month, because last time we took this up, we weren't able to determine. But the, I'd just like to say, this is under the context of the city, the county in which we reside. Has gone from purple to red and then from red to orange in that, and the state is eliminating the tier system altogether on June 15th, so it does look hopeful. But I'd love to hear everyone's comments. Why don't we begin with Councilman Kaiser?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Oh, my God, I'm so looking forward to opening up again, you know. We have Railroad Days. We got the Magic in the Mountains. We got Brew Fest. We had Steampunk. And all these things bring people and revenue to the city of Dunsmere. As well as one hell of a time. So I encourage us all to. Move. I I don't know what we do. We vote to open up or we move to, to, to have events. But I think it's time. I'll let everybody know I got my second shot today. My wife got her second shot today. My whole construction crew went up and got their second shot today, so. I know Wendy got her second shot today. The whole world got her second shot today. It's gonna open up. It's a great thing, so. I'm hoping that we as council can. Can move forward into. Approving the reopening. To allow the Railroad Days Committee to go forward. And prepare for us a date. As well as Jim Powell and the Music in the Mountains. That man's amazing. And I don't know if you guys know, but he's got like 40,000 friends and they all come to Dunsmere. We got the Brew Fest. And to me, that's my main thing, because all the money from the Brew Fest. Goes for scholarships for our own local children. I mean, what, what better thing is that, you know? Oh, my gosh, and the Steampunk. We had one Steampunk and it was so great. Everybody's thirsty. They've, they're saliva-ling at their mouths for a second one. It was great. The band in the streets, I mean, it. And that's what we we do, you know, I mean, so. I'm, I'm encouraging council to sway with me. To allow us, Mr. Mayor, I don't know how we do it with the, with the resolution that we're now open or whatever, sir.
No, 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 it's, this is just a, you know, it'd be a. A motion to support. Things the city would have to do in order to be open, so we would, you know, the way we provide support is just in a few areas. We let them do it. We sometimes let them use city property, et cetera, so just be saying that we support them going forward. We can't be the one making. The call on these, because none of these are city, directly city-sponsored events, so that would be up to the various boards and groups, whether they.
Okay, well, then, then, then. I'll, I'll let everybody talk and then come back to me, and I will make a motion. The council allows the city. The city's organizations. I, Railroad Days, Steampunk, Brew Fest, Magic in the Mountains, and all the other ones. Prepare. Come to council, get the permits, let us know what's going on, but that we are in supportive of everybody opening up. I know I got some kids that want to roll down a hill, guys.
Thank you, Councilman Kaiser. Councilman Deutsch.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My big picture look at this right now is, is that. We really, as a city, don't really have much we can do or not do, as much as. The county right now and Public Health is really kind of controlling everything. I know we're looking at moving out of the tiered system. But we still have to wait for Public Health to give the go-ahead for. Vendors selling food, which I think in any of the events we're talking about, that's going to be a critical component. So, you know, in terms of giving support, encouragement and, and good wishes to whoever wants to move forward, I agree with you that. We really can't initiate anything other than to say that if you decide you want to move forward and you can go through the hoops. We'll support you with the areas that we do like street closures. That's all I have on it.
Okay, thank you. Councilman Arth.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I agree with the prior speakers that the city of Dunsmere is not going to be the leader. Of reopening for city events with one exception, and that exception is. The decisions of our Finance Committee as to what community grants. We wish to approve for the current budget cycle. We have a chamber that is not in a position to take leadership. Our city can't take leadership, or what does that leave? That leaves community groups. We have second Saturday. We have a number of initiatives that the people on Sacramento Avenue and Dunsmere Avenue are talking about. But they are on more of a grassroots basis than sponsored by the city, sponsored by the chamber. I don't know how many of you read the Dunsmere News, but page B10 of the Dunsmere News yesterday is a full-page ad for a 420 festival sponsored in the city of Weed Tuesday, April 20th. That would be 420, 2021. I know I'm going to be there because the ad promises activities, live music, in-store promos, artisan vendor village, food and refreshments. Enter to win drawings for prizes. It's sponsored by the Weed Chamber of Commerce and a number of the cannabis businesses that Weed has permitted. So I, I think Dunsmere is not going to do anything until probably July, August, fall. We're talking about deferring the Citizen of the Year, Alexander Dunsmere Award. Maybe deferring Fourth of July to not be the Fourth of July, but later in the year at the city ballpark. But for the small community we are, it's really going to count on people who have a plan to step up if we're going to have community events. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Art.
Yeah, I think it is. The, the, the main thing that what we need is we need time to advertise our events. You know, it, let's say that we, this is just, I'm just hypothetical.
Excuse me, Councilman Kaiser. I appreciate the insight, you know, into that. But I think, you know, we need to give advice or be more than happy to give any insight to the groups doing this event. But they, they need to come up with the, the best thing. But as far as timing goes, I think we're mostly being asked, I mean, the first one would be early June at the earliest. I think it's just a general from here on out, you know, what is our posture when it comes to supply and city support in the ways we typically do for such events? But I guess I'd like to share kind of with everyone. Some of my insights into the event world, I've actually, through my job managing the ski park up there, had quite a bit quite a bit of involvement when it comes to larger crowds during this time of COVID. I'm happy to say with us just having closed this past weekend, we had no major outbreaks of COVID. Either in our employees or in our guests.
Congratulations.
And at times on busy weekends, we had as many, you know, upwards of 3,000 visitors. Granted, it's a ski area where you can diffuse that activity. But most recently, we had a small outdoor live music venue for the very last weekend because we were in Orange and because a great many of the employees and guests that are regulars there are vaccinated. And I guess I'd just say, if you take certain precautions, my personal experience has been you can mitigate a lot of the risks. Especially if you lean on events that focus on outside activities.
Exactly.
I, I feel as if, you know, it's, it's not easy. It requires kind of reimagining how you do things, what you do, do. But if you're willing to go through that work, people will reward you with their respectful presence. So I encourage people to, to, to look at how they can do these events and I hope to support them. So I'd be in favor of it as well.
Great.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
The one thing that did come to mind that the city may want to take some kind of a lead in. And that is the idea of with the continued concern over fire danger with the Fourth of July coming up. Some way to explore the possibility of having a, an event at the ballpark with fire department around and some way of having a celebration where we could do that on the fourth. I think that should be something we could look forward to and maybe support.
I think that's a wonderful idea. I think we could, we should even try to muster 18 people to play a game of baseball.
That'd be fun. Anyway, so that's all my thought. The other thing I'd say, sir, is that we probably should get some input from the public on this.
Yeah, def- definitely. And the other thing I'd like to say in the other side of it, because I was against events a month ago. Kind of watching and seeing where the world is going, how much of an outlier we are. Weed has that event. Mount Shasta is planning on having concerts in the park, which is virtually the same as the type of event that we'd have at Brew Fest. Much Cloud is full speed ahead. They're going to be having an event in about a month, I believe, Mushroom Festival. So I, I think that, you know, our economy and our businesses will be left behind if we don't produce some form of activity. But I do think we need to think carefully about how to do it in an intelligent manner during this time. Let us open up this topic to public comment. If anyone would like to make a public comment, go to the participants tab and hit the raise your hand button. I have, oh, sorry. First, before I do that, City Manager, you have?
Yeah, so weighing in on this. A couple of things. May 1st, we're going to have the majority of our city employees vaccinated and we're going to be opening for business. And given that Siskiyou County, although the state is saying June 15th, though in Siskiyou County, the vaccine's been made available to anyone that wants to get it. My suggestion is that we consider moving forward with events as of June 1st. And that we also, on my end, seek John Kenny's approval for starting to enforce the vacant and distressed building ordinance. I, I think we're in a position where anybody that wants a vaccine can get it. And the, the one thing I would temper with is while the vaccine is available, we do have an employee that has tested positive is, and is on quarantine. So it's not, it hasn't gone away, but if you're careful and you want the vaccine, you can get it and by June 1st, anybody that feels comfortable getting the vaccine can get it. And I, I feel comfortable saying that we're open for business. And those that don't, that aren't vaccinated, for whatever reason, they can make their own informed choices. Thanks.
All right. Thank you so much. Mayor, let's continue with the public comment, although I don't see any raised hands. I'll give it a couple more seconds. If you're on the phone, you can hit star nine. I'd seen that. I'll close public comment on this item and I'll return it back to Councilman Kaiser. Take us home.
Well. I, I guess what you want me to do, I, I make a motion that we allow the city to open up using the COVID guidelines and
Just say, I move, we express support for events starting June 1st.
All right, I'm, I, I make a motion that we support events starting June 1st.
Second.
All right, a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Yeah, I just wondered if I could hear Todd say the city is open again. That sounded so good.
Well, we're, we're real close. Yeah, matter of weeks. So against zero, so it's unanimously passed. We'll move on to the sister subject of this in many ways, very, very closely tied. Item C. Which is return to in-person meetings discussion slash action.
Love the idea.
I believe we're all, are, are not all of us vaccinated now? Can we say that? I can.
For me, I believe, to, to my knowledge, all counselors are and many of our staff are, which I, I think does have some influence. I'd like to share a thought. I didn't want to have this discussion or the prior one without some input from our fellow councilwoman. And she said that her one hesitancy with the return to in-person meetings is the access to the public, for the public. I mean, it goes both ways. You know, when we meet on Zoom, some people won't be able to find that accommodated enough. But that if people wanted to attend, but for whatever reason, they're not ready to be in person due to COVID, that she'd be in favor of it if we could figure out a way to integrate Zoom or at least for public comment into it.
That would be great. Mr. Mayor, they had a meeting for the parking wrecks. And they had the table like we had with the, everybody sitting at the table six feet apart. And they had all the chairs in the audience or in the room, six feet apart. And I, I, I think that is just a precaution would be great. And if we could have the, you know, the Zoom access availability to us in the council chambers. Because getting things in the council chambers alone is sometimes a battle, but
Well, and I, I think that as long as particularly the general public comment, if there's the ability to phone in and be heard, I think that would be a good permanent addition to to our city council meetings.
Yeah, I agree with you.
It sounds to me like this is going to have to be something that we work out with Siskiyou Media Council. I know Elijah Sullivan's on right now, I believe. And so that could be a follow-up is to work a way to weave into their broadcasting once we get back live and also keep the Zoom going at the same time.
Yeah, or, or maybe to begin with, it might be, I know Wendy and Blake have a lot of experience with Zoom in the short term. But I want to hear, City Manager, I know you've probably been following this as close as all of us, if not closer. And what do you think, given our situation now?
So you know, I, I think that most meetings that we can manage in person with six-foot distance protocols, whether you're vaccinated or not. But my suggestion is to get the input of Juliana before we make a final decision.
Well, I, I asked her specifically and she said that she'd be, she'd be fine with it if we didn't cut off people and who weren't vaccinated, perhaps who wanted to be. So it was, it was that access point. She liked the idea that, you know, people who don't want to be out. And I, I happen to, I think that was a very cogent point and I, I agree with it. Because the last thing you want to do is undermine the public nature of the meeting. Just, just because it's human nature to want to be in person.
Now, the logistics of Zoom in a live meeting, I'm, I'm sure people have done it. We just need to figure out how to do it.
Yeah, that was taken, yeah. And, and if we, you know, it would essentially be, you could watch the, if the live were up from our regular live source from Siskiyou Media Council. Well, we, we can discuss the logistics of it. Well, but you know, with, with Julian's concern and with your thoughts that, you know, we would need all five of us to want to do this to feel comfortable unanimously moving forward. I also would want to know that by and large, staff is supportive of, you know, the, the move towards that because I don't want anyone to feel that danger from it.
I, I think everybody that would have any reason to be in front of council will be fully vaccinated by that point.
Okay. Well, if that's the case, you know, I'd, I'd be in favor. I mean, Councilman Art, I haven't heard you on the subject. So if you'd like to weigh in, I'd be happy to hear that. But I'd be in favor of, even if it's not this next meeting, maybe the one after that, as soon as we can work out the logistics to make it accessible for people.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
You should hear from the public.
Yes, I know. I wanted to hear if Councilman Art had any thoughts. He does have his hand up.
Well, my question to the staff is for the community building and for Old City Hall where we have traditionally met as a council. Are both of those venues Zoom compatible? That is, could we put up on a screen those who wish to participate by Zoom and virtually come to our meetings? But I, you know, I was very much intrigued. The city council in the city of Mount Shasta could not meet because they're dealing with a number of important issues that have captured community interest. And they had a cap of 100 on how many Zoom attendees and they had more than 100. And City Attorney Kenny advised, you can't even have a meeting. So I think there's any number of reasons to move into live meetings that can accommodate Zoom participation. But I know there's been problem after problem with bringing Old City Hall into the computer age and the wireless age.
True.
Great points. My suggestion is that we hold the next council meeting via Zoom while I try to figure out the logistics of getting Zoom on a screen.
Okay.
And, and get John Kenny's approval on this.
Input, yeah, that, that makes sense too, because we don't want to open up any liability, especially, you know, up until COVID, the definition of public meeting was when you had to show up to in person practically. But I know it's changed significantly. Let's open this up to public comment. I do see we have Shereen Strauss, our reporter covering Dunsmere for the Dunsmere News. She has her hand up. Would you like to say some?
Hi, yes. I'm, I'm now with Siskiyou Media Council as well, and they are now currently all vaccinated. The, the people that are covering the sports events and they have to get tested prior to every single game. So they are now going, you know, working in the public. And also the McCloud of city board members, not city, this count, the McCloud board members. They have never had Zoom meetings. They have always had their in-person meetings and they spaced everybody six feet apart. And most all the council members wear masks, but even, you know, through all this COVID, they have continued meeting in, in-house and not all wear masks. So I just wanted to let you know that, that they've always done that.
All right, well, thank you. All right, and good to hear Siskiyou Media Council would be in a position to not feel comfortable helping us with our live meetings where we to go there. Thank you. Are there any other public comments at this time?
Catherine.
Hello, Catherine.
I vote for the hybrid. I think that sounds wonderful.
Okay, thank you. Any other people wishing to make a comment on whether we should return to in-person meetings, when and how? All right, seeing none, I'll close our public comment on this item and move the proposal, the recommendation from staff was that we at least give one meeting. You give ourselves essentially a month to figure out how to move to this hybrid model. But plan on the second meeting in May being that hybrid model in person.
I move, we do that. I so move.
Second, I miss you guys.
All right. Motion and a second. Any discussion on the motion at hand? See none? We haven't any roll call votes tonight, so let's move into a roll call though.
Big Dave, aye.
Restored chai.
Peter Arthur.
Mayor Brian, aye.
There we go.
Motion carries unanimously. That we've tabled item D, so let's move into the item 12, future agenda items. I'd like to open it up with just saying, Todd, you anticipated my next hope that we would discuss returning to some form of code enforcement, but you made it sound like it's probably more of an administrative move where you can just begin. And we don't need to discuss it so much.
It's so it's code related. It's more in terms of are we at a place where we can adequately say that we're open for business or the state's open for business enough where people are willing to invest in new businesses or purchase new buildings based on where we are in our COVID protocols? And I think by June 1st, we will be and we can start sending out those letters and then enforcing. I just need to get the okay from, from John Kenny. Let's see, on. So yeah, that, that's, that's the main issue. I, I think we're, we're about ready to start rocking and rolling and pushing that issue as hard as we can.
Okay, but do you think it's something that needs to be on the agenda for you to move forward on it? In terms of getting legal counsel, coming back to us, us all as a whole, moving forward or?
It depends. Guys are okay with the word of John Kenny. I would prefer once June 1st hits that we, we start sending out letters and enforcing immediately. As long as we got the okay. But we can put on the next agenda if, if you guys so desire.
Okay, no, I mean, I just think it, I, I want Okay. No, I mean, I just think, I, I wanted to touch base on it. If the result of this meeting was that we were going to anticipate reopening in a matter of a month or so.
Put it on the next agenda just for, you know, for.
Clarity and yeah. All right. And then pending Juliana's availability, I think she might be in a position to continue the economic development discussion. I certainly hope we're in a position where we might be working on CDBG and maybe other funding stuff by then, but you would know more about that than I do. If that's, I, I know it's coming eventually that we'll be doing more stuff related to that.
Has a comment.
That comes enough.
Oh, yes, Mr. Mayor. I appreciate Todd's comments. I'm absolutely not okay with waiting until June 1st for code enforcement. So I would like it on our next agenda with the understanding there's no other city I'm aware of in Siskiyou County that is exercising this level of caution in enforcing our laws and ordinances. As we talk about economic redevelopment, we are going to be stuck as long as we have abandoned, empty, underused, deteriorating buildings in Dunsmere. And it's been pretty close to a year since with great fanfare, we passed the Weed Ordinance on empty and abandoned buildings and to no purpose. So it's been extremely difficult for both small businesses and building owners in Dunsmere to survive. We need the help of the city to make a level playing field and ensure us that we have some level of economic prosperity ahead. So I'm not okay with waiting until June 1st. And I'm happy to engage in this conversation with City Attorney Kenny at any time.
Okay, well, you're getting a little overboard with discussing the actual thing, but if you're, you already said we're putting it on.
Could we please have it on the next agenda?
Yes.
Future agenda items. And the other item is the Business Improvement District. I had a very good conversation with the owners of the Mossbury Hotel. Mark Rowley has experience with both T bids and bids in Humboldt County, in Trinity County. He's convinced that this is the right way to go for Dunsmere. So I would like to move forward with the support of the city dealing with the Siskiyou Economic Development Group based on the report we got at our last meeting to help save ourselves from economic decline. Thank you.
So I had something to that. Before Mark called you, I, I asked him to call you. We spoke about the idea of a bid and you know, we kind of chewed over some things in there. One rises to the top. That is a good consulting firm that would help us put a bid in place. They're fairly inexpensive. They would work to putting a nonprofit bid together. The, the, the turning point here is looking at our coronavirus funds coming in or stimulus funds to see if this is a qualified expense to put this together. And I think it is. It's just we, we need to make sure that our rulemaking is in place. But I, I'm in support of hiring a group like Civitas to put a, to put all the framework for a bid together. So that, that's my suggestion.
The sooner we do that, Mr. Mayor, the better.
Here, here. So is this something that should feature in the next agenda? I mean, in the sense that there's still a lot of legwork.
Yes.
Before there's any council action, but we're, council is supportive of it. We're trying to figure out how to pay it and it sounds like we're on a good lead there.
I'm sure. And it does, this will depend on the leadership of Juliana and Todd. That's the way it is.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
I would like to take this opportunity to get into the flow, the idea of a July 4th event at the Ball Diamond. And I think the first step in that would be to wrap in the conversation, the fire chief, to see if he thinks that we could pull this off and have a safe event, you know, shooting off the, the normal kind of low altitude things that we could do on the Ball Diamond with, so I'd like to put that on the agenda and move that forward at some point.
Okay.
Bruce, you better talk to Mike Rodriguez before you do that.
Okay, I will.
I will have that meeting with you.
Okay.
All right. Well, the city does own the ballpark.
What'd you say?
The city does own the ballpark, even if Parks and Rec runs it.
Yeah, you, you try and tell Mike Rodriguez what to do, but.
We'll work it.
Well, I think, I think we should have that. All right. I believe there will be probably a number of things coming up as far as grants and stuff go, but if anyone has any more items for the agenda, just email myself or Todd and we'll get those for consideration in the pre-agenda meeting. Which will be next Thursday. Todd, do you know who's up next?
I think I am.
Okay, so, so Councilman George.
There was actually a little bit of glitch in the calendar. And there was a, basically this last time out, it just had Matthew listed. The next, we need to move everything off. The next pre-agenda is with Mayor Brian and with Councilman Art.
Okay.
All right. All right. Well, there's no other items. I think we're ready for item 13.
Okay, wait, 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 wait. There is one more item.
Yes.
I had mentioned that I would like to have council go up to the, do a field trip. I'll make all the arrangements. I'll call you guys and we can set up times. But I really, really want council to take a look at the school project. And I would, I would like Mr. Mayor, if you, to consider bringing Kathleen Shirley up for citizen recognition. You guys got to see what this woman's done. And I think she needs to be recognized as one of the people at our schools that looks out for our children. And she's put our city on the map with her project. And it was my honor to be part of it. I gotta tell you, it really was. This is great. So I'm asking that we could consider a citizen recognition for Kathleen Shirley for her project at the Dunsmere Elementary School.
All right. Yes, I think that's, we're well worth doing and it would.
And before we adjourn, I just want to remember everybody about the meeting tomorrow night at 6 o'clock at the community building. And the last note was, you guys heard our sheriff say lock your doors. It's that time. Lock your doors. Make a motion to adjourn.
All right. Motion to adjourn. Is there a second? All right, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. All right.
Be safe everyone. Peter, when you roll up at 4:20, call me. I want to.
Well, we have to make sure there's no safety issues before we do our own.
Give me a call.
Yes, sir. You want to ride.
Catherine.
Thank you very much. I'll talk to you soon.
Congratulations, Kat, and, and you guys, Ms. Wallace, Mr. Dewey, congratulations.
Thank you, Big Dave. Thank you very much. Thank you, Peter. Thank you, Bruce and Matthew. Yes, I, I really appreciate it.
Thanks for joining us, Catherine.
Good night, everybody.
Good night.